The fat is just about, it's, it's
About an eighth of an inch.
Away from the, the belts that run the motor.
An eighth of an inch from the radio.
Yeah. And the third picture is a picture of the front of the piece of equipment. As you can tell, that, that frame is cracked in half. From my understanding, I, it wasn't done when I was here, but from my understanding, it's been re, it's been welded once before. And this, this piece of equipment, it, when we're actually building roads, is the primary piece of equipment that compacts the base, which is the foundation of your road. Without this piece of equipment, we really can't build a decent road.
Does this contact the S1 also?
It does, yes, also, yes. And that last picture, I think that's the last one. Yeah, the last one is just another picture of the front of that piece of equipment. And also underneath, underneath, can you explain that, on the bearings on the front tire?
The, the turn is, probably a little far. Underneath where that break in that, there's a huge bearing in that piece. And it just came apart. And the wheels are supposed to be straight. If you look at it, you really can't see right here, but there are an angle. And you can't, when you're using this piece of equipment to press that base down, it doesn't do the job right.
The tires actually don't sit even on, even on the base. They're actually...
You're not going to get a level road.
That's correct. I'm not going to disagree. Not with this, this machine.
So it's still being used if they burn?
It's out of service.
It's out of service right now. Eli, Eli has...
I parked it when that came to me and I saw it and I noticed that we go in there and I can only move it no more because that thing is just going to come apart. And we're trying to lift that thing that changed tires on it. It cannot be lifted up with any other equipment. So it's going to break down in the middle of the road and that will stay on it. We'll hire somebody who can hold it forward.
Does this affect the road that y'all are, y'all can't finish it with...
That's correct now, that is, that's what it's got.
No, they, they're allowed to do some temporary patching and things like that. But to actually do the road work that we're trying to do, we haven't done streets in a while to the level that we're trying to do now. And that's why we're noticing the equipment is definitely inadequate. So that's the bad news. But there's, we're using this as a question. Because the good news is that the funding is there and reference to that because this piece of equipment will only be used for streets. And so that we can use the tax money, you know, to use it for this equipment. And so Eli and Alex have done some shopping and some comparison. And so they have some presentation in your package. And reference to new equipment, purchasing it new. They also have done the due diligence to go and find a used equipment. And so those are the next numbers that you can look at.
That, that's the next page. The next page is a, is a, a big sheet quote from, originally bought from Romco Equipment. And that's, I mean, it's, it's right there, 2011. It's pretty much exactly what we have. It's, it's a 2011 model, which we have a 1989.
And you see that price of 419 for the, this piece of equipment. They also got some quotes for new equipment, Volvo as well. And that's 78,300 dollars. And it would come with a full extended warranty of one year. And they have a picture of what that machine looks like, specifications as well. And just to let you know, we can use Byboard with this company, which means we are a participant in Byboard and this text is approved. And the last one, as you see there, is a case.
It's, it's, it's the same.
It's a different case, matter of fact, it doesn't want to go. Well, 98,459,75 cents.
The 11 Volvo, does it come with any warranty or any percs?
The used one...
The used one? Hold on, the used, the used one does not have no warranty, as is.
As is.
Have you looked at it inspected by a mechanic?
Yes, me and Alex went out there and we checked.
It's, 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 it's in good shape, yes, it is. A lot better than it is. Yeah.
What are they thinking, like, the hours he's used?
He said the hour that this machine had been used for having used it.
That, that machine, it, well, like you, it says 1200, 1283. It, it's, it's got a lot of hours on it. That, I mean, that's not high, but it's not low either. The only thing that my, my preference with that used piece of equipment is the fact that the salesman told us that that piece of equipment was a rental. That's all it really was used for. So, let's say, for instance, if I called to rent for a week or a month, a couple of days, I know he informed us that once it was returned to their shop, it was serviced. And it, it's been kept serviced. And it doesn't mean it's, can't really say that it's going to last. I can't tell you how long it lasts, but it's being, I, I feel with that one piece of equipment, that, you know, with the fact that it's been serviced the way it regularly should be, I, I feel, and I, Eli and I both spoke, that it's, it's a, it's a good purchase. It's a good purchase for a used piece of equipment.
What happens to the Volvo taken out of service? Is it trade aid or?
We've checked into that, but they really don't want it. They really don't want it.
You can basically take it for its prep.
Actually, that's, yes.
We're hoping we can get it to the...
We, we could probably get more for salvage than what we did if, if we got, tried to trade it.
Just run it to the parts fall off.
I'm working.
Take it up to the dump truck and take it to the...
Yeah.
So we wanted you all to have the opportunity to look at that. We did do our research and reference to buying it new, the Volvo or the case, and/or looking at buying a used piece of equipment. But definitely the equipment that we have needs to be taken out of service. And we need to have this piece of equipment so we can finish the one street that we started and that we can complete the other streets in reference to do that. Funding wise, the money is available because we can use some of the street tax money, maintenance money to purchase equipment if we so need it. And we've done so before.
So this would be a cash purchase?
Yes, sir, this would be a cash purchase.
Do you have a question?
For either the new and/or the used.
I have a question. You say money is in this budget. This is also the money that we have allocated for the streets, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
How much do we still have? I know we only started two streets.
Correct.
And we were talking about a barrier. And I don't know what the total dollar amount was. On 10 streets, were they 10?
Right.
Okay, 10 streets. How much was the total, square total of that? And we take it away from this.
449?
It was 441,000 and we used 135,000 out of that for the other equipment that we purchased.
So how many streets?
But through the year, we didn't do any, as of September 30th, we didn't do any repairs. So whatever street that they were carrying right now is coming out of that new budget. So I wrote the balance down to a budget for this year.
So how many streets do we have by you going in it all?
Okay.
Last one.
Well, I did a balance, which is about 330 some thousand dollars. But in the balance sheet, un-audited, that means accumulating what we've been spending this past year, we have a total of 100 dollars of 251. So we can easily make a budget amendment to compensate for what we can for just our equipment to finish the 10 streets. So we're not going to sacrifice the streets because of the purchase of the equipment.
And without purchase, we can do the streets.
With that, exactly. So even, even if we do five streets with any equipment, but we're not in that situation. We're in the situation that we didn't, we're to the equipment, we didn't get anything.
But that's just, that's just the black tuck, correct? That's not including any pipes that need to be replaced?
Correct.
Any type of sewer, water lines, anything like that? So if we need to upgrade them?
This is the tax that comes in annually. This is the tax that comes in annually. So we have collected all the funds in reference to that. This is the tax that comes in annually. But what we want to be able to do is to use those funds so that we can get the streets going. And definitely do the nine of the 10 streets for giving what we said we were going to be able to do. But as we try to start to do the equipment, we've done training. We've noticed that the equipment just can't handle what we need it to do. But we didn't need this piece of equipment even to make, this is repairs as water and sewer breaks and we have to repair them. To even put the roads back to the condition it should be, we need this piece of equipment.
But as far as this question and the pipes and stuff, if we were to get these grants, we can use 70s for the streets.
And that won't be till 2016?
No, it won't be till 2016.
It'll be 2015, 2016, yes. And, and in your report, you saw that Mr. Hyburn was working with them in reference to that. So we're not duplicating his, the same thing. So if we don't get the funding for, the gray zone, I'm talking about the subject, if we don't get the funding for that, then we'd be able to throw it over to the, just a grant of funding. But we're trying to be able to, this is what our focus has been on, so that's what we're focusing on. Yes, and our streets are definitely going to be there and we need to be able to repair that. I think the, the community is looking for, to be able to visibly see this tax being in use. And if we're going to go to them probably in the future to ask them to redo this so that we can have it going forward, we need to be able to point to, we've done this. And we need to be able to have something in place or we'd be able to do the equipment to make that happen.
Eli, do you see, foresee any of the other equipment possibly within borderline of failing?
Yes. Which is the grader, or a big grader, the dresser, the green.
We didn't just buy one? Or we just, we just wanted to know?
Well, they had purchased one, a used one, a while back. I don't remember when I was, I was in the floor. It's a Volvo, which they can't use to tear up the street after this law didn't have the rear. But you can't use that for it.
That's the, the rear end?
In anticipation of those kind of questions?
Oh, compared to the asshole?
We prepared this type of, because we, you know, equipment and I get confused. So we prepared this spreadsheet for you in anticipation of your questions in reference to what we already have, equipment wise. The red is what the red is. The red is saying if we're having problems with it, it's not in good condition. How much is pending, how much we're doing, what we're taking out of service. The yellow is what's new, so we've been able to, be able to do that. And of course, it's, so we wanted to give this to you because I think we had something similar to this during our budget time. But we're really looking at this in reference to that as we're talking about equipment. We wanted to be able to put something in your hands so that you can see and review as we go forward. So the sewer machine that we decided to purchase, those kind of things, we purchased them and there they are laid out for you. The lawn boards are even on there. Everything is there and it was repaired for by Eli. They worked very hard on getting what the modus is, what the condition is, what we had it, what department it's in. We purposely left out the police department because we were just talking about equipment itself. Equipment is in charge for our water, our sewer department, our parks department, our streets. That's what the topic of discussion was tonight. So we wanted to put that in your hands so that you can see that as well.
One question. From this budget, this is strictly the street maintenance tax. Do we have a separate fund for, for, that's not part of the street maintenance tax? The 4% service tax?
For purchasing equipment, sir?
Or equip, or material?
Yes, we have the, the, within the overall fund, we have a street department.
We have a street department.
But that, that only has about 37,000 budgeting to it.
Okay, so material and equipment will come out of this, of this fund?
And, and well, that, usually that we use only for patches and more repairs on the streets because it's not enough money. But the, the project that we're doing for the 10 streets, that is actually coming out of the street maintenance tax.
Okay, and we'll have enough with 551,000 minus whatever we purchased today?
Yes, yeah, because it's either 41,000 or 78 if we decide to purchase the new equipment, which I personally will suggest to do that, the new equipment. That way we have a longer line on the equipment.
That, that was my, my, the reason why I was asking the question. If, if y'all foresee a lot more equipment that's needed to be purchased, perhaps we can still purchase used. Just, let me finish my question. And perhaps, you know, saving that money from, instead of purchasing, you purchase a used and that, you know, excess of 30,000 can go forward to another piece of equipment rather than purchasing a brand new piece of equipment, which, you know, we all know that it's going to give you both warranty as well as longevity. So, you know, that, that was why I was trying to weigh up the options here.
I mean, and that's a hard, in my opinion, that's a hard option to weigh. Because again, you're buying a used piece of equipment. You know, did I drive it, did we drive it? Yes. Does it look good? Does it run good? Yes. I, I don't know the last time that it was actually used when we get it here. I can't tell you that it's going to last us another 20 years. I don't know. Where, where, on the new side, I feel that you're, you have a new vehicle. We're going to have a warranty on it. So when something does go wrong, if something were to go wrong, you know, it's going to be under warranty. And, and that's why I, I stand with Connie, you know, I mean, we'd much rather purchase a brand new vehicle than a used vehicle.
And also because of the fact that it's brand new, every year we can continue purchasing a warranty. So our expense on a yearly basis will be considerably lower. And the difference is only about 30 some thousand dollars for my uniform to 2019. So I might suggest to you to...
But they don't offer warranty on the pre-owned one?
No, they're not, no. And it looks like on the pre-owned one that they presented, it's almost at its number of hours. It's at 1,200 hours. And they stopped the warranty, if you look at the warranty, it says 1 year or 1,500 hours, which everyone comes first. So it's almost out. So even if, they're not going to give you a warranty for another 10 hours. So the staff is recommending that we go with the new machine, definitely the Volvo, because it's a better price and that allows to have the warranty. And so we won't have any maintenance costs in reference to that. And of, and of course, we can continue to buy extended warranty if you care to. They can go beyond the first year.
But that's what I'm saying, there's no extended warranty on a pre-owned.
You can, you can... Yeah, that's why they said as, as is, I prefer to say that it's as is. There's no warranty, no, you know, no perks.
But you just said that you could buy an extended warranty on the new one.
Yeah.
Correct, on the new one.
When's it expire?
Correct. Right before it expires, really, is what you want to get. Right before your due date, when they send us the regular warranty to run. If you need more warranty, then, then yeah. You can go past 7, a lot of times. But only when you buy the new. Always buy the new. How much is the new one?
78.
78.
78, 371.
I think that's a good deal.
I was hoping that's what you wanted to say.
Out of curiosity, in your experience on equipment that we have bought in the past as used, how much time has it spent in your shop? Opposed to something you put in your...
I did. I did.
I sign a lot of checks and I see all these repairs, 2,000 years, 800 years.
Well, I, I know personally that whenever it gets rented, that it's going to get put through the register by whoever rents it. You know, so it's, and it's not going to be treated the same as if... Now, if it came from another, another municipality of some sort, you know, then you would know that it was maintained properly and only had one owner and so forth. But being that in this, in what a used equipment and rental, yeah, it's not there. So they're not going to take care of it.
Another thing we did check into was rail. Let me take what you do. Ask, remember, talk about a thousand dollars. You don't know how long it's going to be.
Well, we wanted to complete that one street that they started. And so we had them to put into, with a thousand dollars a week to rent it, was not an option for them. With the weather, it said something about the year, I just couldn't, I offered to rent that for a thousand dollars. We wanted to wait and replace the equipment, whether it's used or new, or pretty new. But we couldn't expend the funds of a thousand dollars to rent it.
Next question, a consequence to how I asked. I mean, if you spend 78 and then your, your projects force something, your margin of error is very slim though, right?
Yes, and, and I wanted to answer that question. These, the, the state maintenance or the tax maintenance fund is being replenished every month.
Every month, yes.
So it, it's not that we're going to completely deplete this fund. It, it will still continue making more money. But certainly, we're not going to have as much money as we have now. But the good side of it is that we're going to have 10 streets that are going to be repaired. Now, these tax maintenance, it, it's like it's four years. And then we have to go back again and vote so we can continue these tax. And if we don't show the citizens that we have that anything for these streets, chances are that we are not going to pass that again. And, and so we need to use this money for good.
Yeah, I think the consensus, the consensus that we do need a new, a unit, whether it's new or used.
Yeah.
So you're saying we'll be able to do 10 streets with 500,000 dollars will be left over?
You will probably have like maybe five, six thousand dollars by the end of this year. But you will have 10 streets repaired and you will have to, we don't have right now.
Okay, Alex, she's saying you're going to have 10 streets ready by the end of the year.
I was going to stop you right there.
That's what I heard.
I was going to stop you right there.
Well, it's not going to rain and it's not going to snow, sir. It can have weather conditions.
Right, right. We're going to do, we're going to do all we can to get the majority of those streets done this year. But I'm not going to sit here and lie to anybody. I guarantee it's not going to happen.
And if that's the case, if we cannot get all 10 streets, that's even better because we're going to have another year of not accumulation of tax that will appeal for next year.
Excuse it. Make a motion that we purchase the street maintenance equipment, a, a new support for 78,371 dollars?
Okay, I have a motion.
Is that the director of the staff?
That is definitely the director, he's your staff.
Yes, sir.
I'll go on second, that motion.
If you have a motion by councilor, or please, second by Councilman Doritos. Councilman DeHada, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Nethan?
Yes.
Councilman Geto?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0, order it, you have a 14. Thank you, Mia.
Thank you, Congress.
So we're going to go on to item 4D. Consideration and action to appoint a mayor pro 10.
I'd like to reappoint Mayor Pro 10.
Can I finish yours, please? As for our city charter, 3.05, Mayor Pro 10. The city council, at this first meeting after the election of council members, shall elect one of its key number, Mayor Pro 10. And he or she shall perform all the duties of mayor in the absence or disability of the mayor. Not the stepping down of the mayor, okay? It's just if I'm not available for ribbon cuttings or whatever, they work on it. Or if I'm absent from the city council meeting, okay?
Consider it?
No.
I think Mr. Geto has done a very fine job of Mayor Pro 10. So I want to make the motion to reappoint John Geto.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman, so let me hear it second. Was it, was it Councilman?
Yes.
Second by Councilman Ortiz. Councilman DeHada, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Nethan?
Yes.
Councilman Geto, do you want to go?
I think so.
Your motion carries 4-0. Now, 4D. Consideration and action to appoint a representative on the audit committee. Please, John?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, we are in the process, and actually the auditor will be here the Tuesday after the holidays, I believe it's the 20th, to start this process for our audit. That is going to be key for us going forward, financing for the community center. We are projecting that they do it earlier this year and they get last. And we're hoping we're able to close last year. I don't want to steal, kind of stunt it for next meeting, but we were able to close last year. And we're hoping that, that audit will be ready by the 26th of March. And so we need to be able to have the first meeting of this committee typically, or historically, it has been a council member and a citizen that is not based on the charter. It just says that it has to have an audit committee. But historically, you have had a representative from the council as well as a citizen, and this one. And myself is on that committee as well as Connie Arkum children.
I'm in board. I started on the audit committee. I believe the city charter says that it has to be three council members.
You say three?
They're posted at the end of this.
I think they're definitely posted at the end of this, so we need to...
It may note, note fewer than 30.
What's the number?
9.27.
I'm sorry?
9.27.
3.16 in your charter. Page 11. Yes. 11 talks about audit and examination of city books and accounts.
Why don't you just read it?
It says the council shall not take no fewer than three of its members to serve as an audit committee. This committee shall lead the process of selecting an independent auditor, direct the work of the independent auditor to scope of the annual audit and any matters of concern with prospective internal controls, and receive report of the internal auditor and present the report to the city council with any recommendations from the committee. Then it goes on to the public hearing. And so we need three council members at least, they say, nothing less?
And then, again, if you remember back, Mr. Hug pointed out that the council member cannot appoint himself. So each council member has to appoint somebody else and not himself.
So we need three people. As I said, we need to be able to discuss the preliminary hearing. The preliminary film work is going to start on the 20th. So we don't have anything in time soon, but we need to form this committee.
I make a motion to appoint these three guys next to me.
We're going to do three, you know, as a whole or as one at a time?
The three Charles.
It's up to you.
Those three ones.
Last meeting, we, you, we, y'all wanted to do historically the...
Because of numbers.
Correct.
So you need to be one or two.
Okay, I'm going to call it, please.
A second.
Who's second? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yes. I'll make the motion to appoint John Geto.
Second. Yes.
One more.
I'm going to go.
John did, Erica did John.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Ortiz here, and not any Councilman Geto. No. You have a second?
A second.
Councilman DeHada, how do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. And do you select to have a citizen to speak on this committee? It is not required by charter, but you have historically had at least one citizen on the committee.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Pitt.
Mr. Rich, on my Allen Parks Foundation, thank you, but I can't...
Mr. Bush, on my Allen Parks Foundation, thank you, but I can't accept that nomination.
If we have any individuals, uh, that can afford to that?
I won't accept that.
No, sir. I have not received it. We have not advertised. You can advertise if you so desire.
Uh, then I'd like to go then and appoint Mr. Longa. He's, he's been, uh...
Mr. Longa.
Mr. Tim Longa. He's in the aisle.
I second the motion.
I have a motion, uh, councilman second, can I second?
Yeah, who will be second?
Motion by councilman Rodriguez, second by who seconded it? Second by councilman Yeto, councilman Dejada, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilman Geto?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, mayor, council. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it as well. Um, police, um, CBA negotiations committee?
I don't get to do very much.
Oh.
Okay, four A, consideration in action to appoint a councilmember to the collective bargaining agreement negotiations committee. Is that one councilmember or?
Just one councilmember. Mayor, please be mindful of that. This is the last year of their, um, of this agreement, and so we need to be able to negotiate and start early on. Uh, the committee is, uh, the chief of police, myself, the county chairman is returning, and we need to have a representative from the council.
I move to appoint one of, you want to be on the, on the committee? I'm gonna be on it. I move to appoint councilmember Warner Peace for the collective bargaining agreement negotiation committee.
I have a motion by councilman Yeto, the councilman Ortiz, may I have a second?
A second.
Second by councilman Dejada. Geto, you have a vote?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay. Now we're gonna go to four G, consideration in action to get direction from the council on board appointments. For the four A, planning and zoning, and Parks Foundation. Mayor?
In reference to, uh, four A, um, staff, myself personally, is asking for direction in reference to four A. Four A board is gonna be very important in reference to, uh, upcoming refinancing and restructuring of our, uh, general obligation bonds. Um, this board has had, um, has been really working hard, but they've been having a little problem with the forum. Uh, their attorney resigned. Uh, we're gonna need them in place. Um, we've been fighting them, they've been really trying, but they still, but they can see, and so the direction of where the council wants to go was displayed in our budget workshops, and they're not quite sure of clear direction. What I am asking is that we give me clear direction on how you want to advertise and to fill this committee, but this board is gonna be very important going forward, an integral part of us refinancing and restructuring. And we can do it, uh, financially, by just saying without, you know, when this is gonna be in place, but it's not the best-case scenario. The best-case scenario is for them to be open and active, to be able to meet, to have an attorney, to have a interlocal agreement between the city council and the four A in reference to the community center. As well give them this clear direction as to what you want them to do in relationship of if they want to run this or not. But I do want to warn you that if they default, you're still on the hook. So the operation, the maintenance, we, it's definitely been on the staff side. The staff is there, it's on the staff's side. How it came up that somebody thought that at one point in time we could just give it over to the four A, let them go on their merry way and be all that themselves, it just cannot happen. Financially, it has not been able to do that. So what I am recommending is that we have a board that is there for the purpose of the finances of this. Definitely, as we get forward, something like the tip board that they have, or whatever, their purpose is to take care of the financing in reference to, that, you know, there's two, the land as well as the building. But at this point, we need to have them on point. They need to have attorney in place so that we can take care of this funding without any thick ups or any problems.
Since their last meeting, have they, have they conducted a forum?
At their last meeting, in reference to appointing the secretary, they did have a forum, they had perfect attendance, and they're willing to roll their sleeves and work. We do have a vacancy, but they're looking for direction, and they're asking me, and I'm not quite sure if I have clear direction to be able to give them direction of...
Is it possible to have a workshop?
No, sir, go ahead.
Is it possible to have a workshop with this board, at the same time appoint someone that you, that you advertise, and those people have come board already, and to move forward exactly so they know their position, what's expected of them, what their roles are?
Yes, sir, I think, and that would be perfect, because they need to be part of our workshop that we're gonna have. We get to promote in reference to that, and we can post both of their meetings in reference to that, but your attorney has point of order in reference to that. But I'll be fine.
Well, it's not a point of order. I'd like to kinda second what both of you are talking about, because one of the problems that I've seen over the last several years is the four A board has been in, has been out, has been around. Uh, it's been difficult for them to understand direction from the council. I think a workshop would be very much in order. One of the reasons Mr. Hug last time recommended, and Mr. Rodriguez reminded us, that we wanted those appointments by, by position, is it's, it's all too easy to say, well, the council can relieve me, and I'm out of here. I think it's important that the council say, we want people with financial background, on both four A and four B, and that they're gonna be serving at least a bitter part of their two-year term, or whether their term's gonna be, and that you give them some direction. In this case, what the manager's saying is, is we're in a position, we must issue refinancing bonds this year, and those refinancing bonds are imperative if they go forward. Very important if the bond market continues to go up on interest, it's very important to go quickly. So, you, the idea of the workshop, I think is important, and I think the idea of workshop with fiscal advisors is very important.
So do we wanna conduct a workshop with all three of these listed, on all the, all three of these boards?
The primary, primary.
Four A, planning and zoning has been going far enough, and, and, no one has...
I think you all have seen this.
Uh, and no one has actually looked to me that they wanna get off the, uh, the planning zone. Uh, it's just that, you know, just far, they know nothing in reference to the four A. They've been doing, uh, a building job, and when I asked to have a meeting, they haven't listened. But we just need to give them clear direction. I need to understand what direction we want them to go. And then I think, uh, if I can figure that out, come from initial suggestion, that we do need to be with them. So they can hear from you, and, you know, what they need to have to go forward with this. So, uh, we, we can, we can definitely set one of those special meetings. It'll be a four A, and a finance, and all those things in reference to them.
Madam Mayor, could this be part of our workshop on the fourteenth?
Okay, now, now, warning, 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 warning. I tried to keep it for one hour. Uh, we have forty-five minutes of the workshop, and then you're gonna have some other issues in reference to what you wanna have. I wanna, I wanna be respectful of your time, but I don't know if I can at this point get them here, sir, uh, at such short notice.
Okay. Well, whatever the case, I agree with the councilman Yeto. But primarily, I think we need to set the direction for the, for the committee. We need to have some expectation of what we, what they presume. So much has been focused just on the building. However, there are several acres out there that we need to start developing also.
So in that, in that respect, what we can do is actually have a discussion amongst the council as to how you all see it, and then we can bring the four A once you come to the council, and then you can express that to them. Is that what you're saying, sir?
Yes.
But we can put that on that, uh, early agenda for a discussion. Everybody may have different ideas, it comes from different voices. You can have a brainstorming, then everybody can come to the same conclusion, and then we can take it to the four A. Is that, is that fair? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question for you.
And I think there's one other point that follows that, and that is there needs to be an interlocal agreement that says what it is that each affects the other. And then interlocal agreements, the critical missing piece.
Yes, and we also have to have an interlocal agreement when we go forward with this restructuring as well. Uh, but do remind us that the four A, no longer has an independent attorney. They are not represented at, at this time.
Okay, Lou, my question to you. Each group has their own set of bylaws. They came to city council, the city council approved them. Those state returns vary incorrectly. So those need to come to play when we have an earlier one. Uh, we can get them on, get to all the councilmen if they don't have it at this time, because there's a lot of crucial stuff in there that I think that we have to discuss.
Yes, ma'am. And, and along that same line, ma'am, if I may, there's also big statute that talks about, uh, four A and what's in it. But we're trying to get you as much information, part of the meeting, for the meeting day, council committees, in reference to that. So we can have the meeting to discuss what the four A should look like. You all can decide that in the meeting itself, a meeting following that, establish the board and who the four A will be.
Kelly?
And also, uh, from what we're talking to Mr. Queiroga, which is our finance, uh, advisor, uh, he advises to have a policy in place, and I do believe that it's very important to have a policy in place for the four A board. So that way we know what their responsibilities are in regards to the financial part of their duty.
So that will be part of the local, yes. Okay, so I, I understand that correctly.
Why hasn't there been an interlocal completed before? Why hasn't there ever been an interlocal agreement?
I think there has been an interlocal agreement, but there was a, pretty much a failure a couple of years ago on the board functioning, and so the city took it over when Mr. Javon was manager, because there was really no choice. And so it's been pretty much a stab function since then. So what I'm really saying to you is, is the interlocal that existed kinda got overtaken by a damage.
So kinda, we can never fall back on that existing?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you need to kinda rethink where you wanna be. It's possible you can go back and tie that.
So we can basically say we can make an amendment to the previous interlocal?
You could.
Uh, we'll have to find that. I, I don't have a copy. We'll, we'll have to find what we can find. Do you have it? But we'll save it.
I think I have them in reference, but I got them from, and I'll have to look.
I'd save another one.
Uh, just, I have one more, and then Lou has one. In reference to planning and zoning, um, none of them have expressed that they want to... They're seeing to be happy and meeting in a very timely manner. They didn't meet this month because they didn't have it on agenda, I'm quite sure, it's because of the holiday. But I didn't know if you wanted to advertise for that, or if you wanted to put it on agenda for appointments. I was looking for direction in reference to planning and zoning.
My opinion is that we treat them all the same. We're gonna do partiers and rituals, like we said, but...
And you're suggesting, excuse me, Madam Mayor, you're suggesting that we advertise and tell people these positions are open, and that we want some people to sign up and volunteer to be on the board?
I'd be after us having a meeting with them, just like we're gonna do with the four A.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand now. I didn't understand it first.
So that they're all treated equally?
Okay, so you wanna have an opportunity to meet with each board individually, um, and, sure, we can put them...
They can tell us what their goals are, and they can start their employment.
Right, and then I follow the direction from, I can make note of that. And then in reference to the last one, ma'am, that's actually news, decision and discussion on that point.
Because no one, none of the, from the P and Z, they're, none of them are termed out, right? I mean, they've...
They're, I don't think there's terms associated with that board.
There's no terms for P and Z, not even the title.
No, because it's more of a committee, but, uh, there's a point, but we can set up a meeting so that you all can meet with them, and you can have dialogue and discussion back and forth. In reference to the Parks Foundation, I move, turn it over to Lou.
I think a number of you have asked about the Parks Foundation, and you know, we have a president and a bunch of new audience tonight.
With Georgina Ramon?
What's that? Georgina Ramon. Parks Foundation member?
Yes.
All right, this particular item has been of some concern to several councilmembers. And the only thing I wanna say is, is I'm gonna summarize paragraph one, the certificate of formation for the foundation was filed in June of two thousand and ten, and in its original article nine, the affairs and management of the corporation, referring to the foundation, shall be vested in the board of directors. This article also grants the right to many bylaws relating to the number, terms, and office and manner of appointment, and the qualifications of the directors. And then we went through a period where the nine nineties didn't get reported, and so we started again. And on January fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, pursuant to the above referenced grant of authority, the Parks Foundation adopted a new set of bylaws, which did come before the council, in which it's section one point oh one reads, the Florisville City Council initially appointed the board of directors. Following the installation of the Florisville Parks Foundation Board of Directors, the affairs and management of the Florisville Parks Foundation shall be vested in the board of directors. So the board of directors pretty much takes care of appointing or reappointing themselves. This is an independent standalone agency. It's not covered by state law, it's not covered by your charter. And it was contemplated at the time, and I know Mr. Tahari, you can speak to this, it was contemplated by the time to be a fundraising organization that would help supplement and support the city in its parks, foundation, parks activity development. Uh, it's gone through some growing pains, but it's not technically part of the city. And the only way that you can really get the foundation to do your bidding would be to connect it to grants or loans that you're gonna make available to the Parks Foundation if you want them to change your charter. But you have no immediate requirement right now to tell them what to do or not to do, except through grants, loans, and agreements, interlocal agreements. They're not a four A, they're not a four B. They're not a Phelps. So we don't have a direct relationship.
So are they funded by the city?
They have not been funded by the city, to the best of my knowledge. Mr. Jones, you want?
No, sir, you're totally correct. In fact, if you go back through ordinance two eighty-five, we can't even touch that. That has to come through you folks, like we did earlier this past year when the city manager came to us and said, we need to get ready for the October four event, with the adoption of the hiking bike trail. They needed mowers. So she consulted with us, and we advised her to use parts of that dollar collection so as to get those mowers, because two eighty-five specifically talks to the maintenance of the parks, everything that I understand, from everything, cutting grass, to pimbing trees, and, and proving the project, so, no. And I think that there is an initiative going down to where somebody is even thinking that we might somehow or another get tied into the hotel motel tax. I'm sure that the board would say no to that, because we wanna work tirelessly and be able to do what Mr. Jossman and Mr. Rosenberg put together in a foundation document in their bylaws to support the citizens. In fact, I came in to visit with the city manager Monday morning, and the flush valves in Pecan Park had been stolen, as well as the cover. And your park superintendent turned to me and said, Mr. Jones, can you give us some money so we can fix the toilets? So that's what we wanna do.
Okay, Mr. Jones, and where are you getting the money from?
We had four thousand dollars that was moved to the parks back in October, December, I'm sorry, January timeframe of two thousand and eleven, which resulted funds from the first holiday extravaganza. A year and a half ago, the Wilson County Patriots did a bake sale, a garage sale, raised eleven hundred dollars, and donated to us. We have purchased four grills after a blogger on the Wilson County News said that none of the grills were operable in Pecan Park. We have bought four, and with the help of the city manager, the Parks Department, you now have five serviceable grills that cost us five hundred bucks. So we're down about four thousand dollars. It cost us four hundred dollars to get our five oh one C three back. So we're right out of the four thousand dollars. According to our charter, according to our bylaws, I have pleaded with this organization here, with all the citizens. I'll take your used Mercedes, I'll take your Lincoln Continentals, I'll take your dollar bills, and we'll convert it with our five oh one C three again. This is a payed political nelson for the park. This is a paid political announcement for the park. We need your help, we need your money, we need your sweat, we need your blood. That's where we will get our money.
Now, on the purchase of the, uh, I'll, I'll direct this to Ms. Turner, when they purchased the lawnmower equipment, the equipment for the, uh, the city, where did that go from?
It, it came from the Dallas fund, it's actually put on the, um, water bill, and the way I was reading the ordinance is that I had to confer with them, the Parks Foundation, um, and once I confirmed with them, then I brought it to you for approval. But it said in the, I had to confer with them, or consult with them, and that's what I did in, you know, consultation. But that, that money for the lawnmowers came from the dollar off of the water bill, so initiated it. Back in...
Before the, I think like, October, it was some time at, uh...
No, until I referenced when the ordinance came to place, it was in place for some time, I believe it was September.
You know, I could be wrong, if Mr. Jocelyn here, and Mr. Rosenberg is here correctly, but I believe when the dollar was dedicated, it was not dedicated to any specific group, it was dedicated to maintenance of, of greenfields in, in the city, not necessarily to the Boys and Girls Club, or the Parks Foundation, or any, anything else. It was dedicated to the maintenance of parks.
Right.
Not necessarily the Parks Foundation. So, I believe you're incorrect, you say you have to seek their, uh, confirmation or consultation, uh, from the Parks Foundation.
Let me correct you, sir, the actual language says, "It will be consulted with the Parks Foundation and other private and public entities," is the actual language in two eighty-one. But you're right, it's not our money.
That's right.
It's a citizen's money to maintain the parks.
Exactly.
And the other thing is, is that from consulting with Mr. Rosenberg, the initial thought was, is it would be seed money, so that we could go out and get grants, and there is a paragraph that talks about, unless it conflicts with a, a foundation initiative. So, if we were working with Heartland to have something done in one of the parks, and we could get a three for one, give up like fifty thousand dollars out of that, that one dollar bill collection, we would come through the city manager, who would then address you folks and say, "Hey, can the Parks Foundation use that fifty K to go against whatever the grant that we could actually get?" But it would still be, you're okay.